Okay. I'd like to call the Service Committee meeting together at 6:02 PM. Members present are Steve Young, Ciara and Sherick, myself as chairman, and Brenton Potter is absent. I'd like to know if we have any public participation for service? Seeing none, we'll move on to what we got. The 2023 Service Garage Stormwater Project. Okay. So my understanding, we got to pass or moving on to finance. This is a stormwater project that EPA is requiring, an MS4 is requiring the garage to do. Jeff, you got anything you want to talk about on that?
Well, it's a project we had put in the budget for this year. And it was, we had an inspection and we have to do some separation there with the sewer.
Yeah.
So it's split between actually sewers and drains and the street department. So, but it's all work that's getting done right at the service garage. And we do have it in the budget.
Okay. That was for what, 121?
121,500 dollars.
Okay. It's in the budget, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Seeing that, we have to move it to finance so they can pass that.
So, I have a question.
Yeah.
So it's, the work is done right there at the garage, not anyplace else in town?
Correct.
Yeah. Each, what it is there in each facility is owned by the city. Me or she, he can do a little bit of that.
So Dylan Wyatt from McKeever and Associates. So with the city's MS4 ordinance that they put in place, part of that is the EPA comes around all of the city properties to determine if there's any discharges into the storm sewer that aren't allowed. And at the service garage, the back portion of the garage where the brine is mixed, the salt stored, and aggregate stone stored, and the sweepers cleaned out, all currently drains to the storm sewer. And they're requiring us to take that out of the storm sewer, put it into the sanitary sewer in case there's any accidental discharge from the brine mixing or from when the sweeper cleans out, things like that.
That makes sense. That's what I was wondering. Thank you. And then it's, it's in the budget as in we have the money for it or we already budgeted for it?
We budgeted for it.
Okay, that's, because I just wanted to make sure that that was enunciated because it didn't, it was coming across convoluted. It's in the budget. Well, we have lots of things, right? So I just wanted, I wanted to make sure.
Yeah, we've been budgeting together in those two funds.
Okay.
That has its own separate line, I have it in each fund.
Yep.
Awesome.
Okay. You entertain a motion to pass it on to finance?
I'll make a motion to pass it to finance.
Aaron, Steve second. Don't you, am I saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Any more open projects anybody? Any more public participation from the audience? Seeing none, we will resume at 6:05.
All right. We will call the Health and Safety Committee meeting for July 6th to order. Members present are Dan Wireball, Steve Young, Mark McKeever and myself as chair. And we'll call it order at 6:07 PM. Is there any public participation for Health and Safety? Seeing none, our first item is 450 Dudley Street. I know they had asked for some money to do some remediation. Jeff, you have info on that?
Well, I didn't know Mr. Gerner was going to be here.
Nor did I. We had asked him several questions last night that we were hoping to get the answers to today.
No, I think, you know, if he can attend the next meeting, Dudley Street has been a problem for the last couple of years. And I think it just kind of, some of the other landlords in town, it goes down through the family. And now the family doesn't want it either. And it's just, it's in really bad shape and all the neighbors are complaining about it. We went to court. And that's, as far as I know, it needs an asbestos investigation.
Yeah, he just paid that, I think, at $26,000 and then tear down his head.
That's kind of what he thought it would cost, but, I mean, I mean, we've waited this long. We can wait till the next meeting and have him bring some more material about it, but I just told him, I said, we got to do something.
My only concern was we've left the, was it 403 Warren Street sit down for X number of years. I don't want this to leapfrog that, you know, those people that are waiting to get that one removed too, so.
Well, maybe by the next meeting then, we can have the auditor look where we're at and maybe we can fund both of them.
That would be nice.
So, I know we have some money in there, but I think it's, it's like $10,000, I think, is all we put in there.
Yeah, I think it was enough even for the Warren Street property.
Yeah.
All right.
Sorry, I don't have more info than that, but.
That's okay. Well, that gives us some time to do some research.
I was kind of pro and equal to him, like we got to do something.
Yep. Okay.
Any other open projects that you down wish to bring up this evening?
Just, Mr. Mayor, were you able to talk to see if somebody could come up at our next meeting?
Yeah, I did talk to the chief. And, oh, shoot, emails, okay. Yeah, they've stopped people and warned people about, you know, excessive speed, but they haven't, it hasn't been a big issue for them. And I think, I think with the staffing issues, that's what the chief was concerned about. They have to prioritize. They just don't have enough officers to do everything and they.
Is there, could he come in and tell us what he could use from us? How can we help? Can we?
I know what those answers are going to be.
Yeah. But I'm saying, is there anything else? I mean, I know we'd like to hire more, but first we got to have the money.
I think from Mr. Gerner's explanation, the last meeting, there's really nothing else we can do.
But what we can do to help like this is.
Okay, why don't you, I'm going to make a suggestion to you. Reach out to him personally.
I can do that.
Yeah, why don't you? Instead of going between me and him. I know, it's a good idea, it's a, but he kind of explained it and, you know, so.
I'll be glad to talk to you.
Yeah, I think, I think, you know, he'll, if you wanted to come up and request it, then.
Sure.
All right, thank you. That's all I have on that.
Go ahead. If it's on that, go ahead.
Before you move to the next subject, yeah, I observed a family of, I observed a family of.
Maybe four or five on motorized electric, I don't know if they were electric or gas powered, but.
Yeah.
Riding through the neighborhood, just, and that's great, you know, but.
Going the wrong way, going in the opposite direction of traffic that I saw.
I mean, they were going through town, basically that's a motorcycle, you know, and.
You trying an electric bicycle?
Yeah, electric bicycle or.
They, they are specifically mentioned in the Highway Rights Code that they're allowed, but they still have to follow all the applicable traffic laws, the same as the car with a stop signs and right away and things like that.
We had the boy, yeah, the young boy up at the car show doing, you know, fishtailing on his little motorbike with no plates, no, you know, and I don't know if it's even just as much as trying to, you know, I mean, maybe we don't have to go to the police department and start writing tickets and stuff, but just enough to get, to educate the public that, hey, this electric motorbike you have that goes 65 or, I don't know, 65, 35 at least, 35 through town should have the same requirements as. Yeah, they have, the chief did say they've stopped people, let them know that, so it's kind of annoying. And I don't know if that's something, you know, that the, that the media can help us with since they're here. Trying to get a free plug here. But anyway, you know, if that's something we can't get more, you know, out there to, you know, whether it's, you know, we used to have signs on the streets that said no skateboarding, you know, of course, all that disappeared because we can't hang signs, we can't hang signs on these new poles, but we can hang flower baskets and banners. But anyway, and so we used to have signs that said that, you know, no skateboarding, that kept, supposedly kept people off the sidewalks, but, you know, is that something we need to do for these other things, you know?
Well, they're teaching all that in safety towns, who give it 20 years?
Oh. You may not remember the classic, the classic song, signs, signs everywhere, a sign, block and scene, you know, all that stuff. So, you know, that's why there's no, and I think most people would rather have flowers on than a sign. I'm defending the flower.
Any other public participation?
If I remember the last committee meeting, didn't, wasn't the law director checking on golf carts or heavens, going to have some additional information?
I don't think it was golf carts because they're already regulated by our codes and the Highway Rights Code. They're on 25 mile an hour less street with the license plates, have to pass the inspection. Well, I think the concern was really like the people around the handicap scooters, the mini bikes.
The modified ones.
The modified ones, yeah, especially the, you know, because there's several other people that, you know, presumably they, they need those versus the people that are all for fun. And how do you tell the difference? But I know some of them have the slow moving vehicle sign. I don't know if that makes it legal in itself or not. The problem that I have of all of those is if it's not a licensed vehicle, then there's no liability, you know, they're not insured. And so if somebody on a mini bike or a handicap scooter, you know, causes you to crash your car, well, you're now at fault when it was their fault because they're not insured. So that's my biggest concern with them. So, yeah, he was checking on something, I just don't know what else, you know, he thought that we, from, from what I gathered, he said there's not a lot we could do at this level nor, you know, if the police department's able to catch him and cite him and.
I'll cover it with Neil.
Okay. All right. All right. Public participation.
My name is Greg White. I live at 1125 Hillcrest Drive. You know that I've talked to you about a particular vehicle that goes downhill Crest Drive at mock speed, has no license plate on it, it's a gator. Kids were on it the other day. I don't even know if they're old enough to even drive that thing. The other thing is, I want to ask another question. I have noticed too, don't mind people going through our neighborhoods and golf carts and stuff, but I have noticed that people have modified their golf carts with huge monster mud tires and wide tires. Now, oh yeah, yeah, they're getting bad. I mean.
Well, now, I had a golf cart at one point and I did go through the inspection process and the inspection list you can get down at the, at the police department.
No, he had regular tires on it before and now he has wide tires that stick this far outside.
That's still, with everything on the checklist, that.
Don't they have to have mud plups on those so that debris doesn't come up on, onto your windshield or nothing? That's why I'm asking a question.
That's not on the checklist? If we don't design the checklist, that was designed by the police department.
Was designed by the police department?
Yep.
Okay, because I noticed now people are now modifying after they get their license plate, they're modifying these things. And I noticed too that I saw a group going down Southern Avenue the other day and no one had their seatbelt on. Not one stinking one of those kids had a seatbelt on.
And from what I remember, they're, they're not required to be worn on the back seats, but they're required that all seats have them to get your, to pass the inspection here, but then you can take them off and nobody cares.
But the only thing is, aren't they required if a kid is under a certain age to be in a car seat?
Yeah, I believe that follows the thing.
Okay. This kid did not have a car seat and was standing on the golf cart. Okay? Going down Southern Avenue. And you know Southern Avenue is very, very, and if you catch that one burned by the cemetery, you're going into the fence. There's no way possible that you're going to avoid not hitting that fence or overturning in some portions of that thing.
You bring up a valid point though, that after the inspection occurs, they can do whatever they want. And then once, the inspection's only to be allowed to get your license plates and after you've got your license plates.
But now they're modifying them. I mean, this guy, not going to say who it is.
That might be another question for Mr. Gerner if we're able to inspect him annually.
He has huge monster tires that extend completely out of the wheel wells of the golf cart.
You remember when we were kids, we had to get our bicycle inspected every year to be allowed to ride it?
That's right, back in the 60s and 70s. We had to have a license plate. I'm trying to find one of those because a friend of mine called me and asked me if I still have one. But we had to have our bikes inspected and get a plate to be affixed on the back of our bicycles.
Thank you.
Thanks, Greg.
I just wanted to update everybody about 403 West Warren. That's actually been purchased and I'm going to steal your thunder a little bit here, Mark, but that's actually been purchased by Bucyrus Dental Group. And they are going to the Board of Zoning Appeals to have a parking lot there.
That's not the one that burnt though, is it?
No, it's not the one that burnt, but you had mentioned 403.
That's where I got that at.
Yeah.
The one that burnt would then be 405 or 407.
I know, it'd be great if they could get that one too.
That's the one I was talking about. So I was referencing the firehouse, not that one.
So just for clarification, for your benefit and for everyone else, I've been working with them. We've designed a parking lot that'll hopefully fit real well within that neighborhood and they're going to the Board of Zoning Appeals next week and seek special permission to get that installed, so I'm excited about that. And I know.
They need a larger lot or they want to buy the other one?
Yeah. The, we've had several neighbors call in and say how excited they are that that house is getting torn down.
Just to remove the light it has, sure.
Yes, yes. All right, thank you.
Sorry I made that error on the address.
Any other public participation for Health and Safety? Seeing none, we will adjourn at 6:19 PM.
Okay, I'll call Public Lands and Buildings to order on this July 6, 2023 at 6:20 PM. Members present are Kevin Myers, Dan Wireball, myself, Ciara and Sherick Chair, and Mr. Brenton Potter is absent this evening. First off, do we have any public participation? Okay, seeing none. I was emailed something from Mr. Gerner. Did everybody get a chance to see that?
I missed that.
Okay. So, sorry, I can't even.
In reference to.
That's what I was trying to get to. The splash pad.
Oh, oh yeah.
Kuonis agreement that he decided at 4 o'clock today to put into our agenda. He just has maintenance agreement and I'm pretty sure there's a whole lot more listed into that than just maintenance. I don't know what he would call that, but it's definitely got more than maintenance going on in that agreement.
That's exactly what it is, I mean, and Kuonis has not passed it yet either, so if you need table it till Mr. Gerner's here, that's fine. But Kuonis is not, they're going through it right now as we are, so.
It's basically just what the city's responsible for and what they're responsible for. My understanding was the first couple of years this company was going to take care of the maintenance. Is that true or somewhat true?
Yes, but they, they made this agreement for 10 years and that the company, for a fee after this year, they will come in every year and set it up, tear it down in the fall and winterize it for a fee. And that's going to be on the Kuonis, not the city.
But, oh, that's on the Kuonis, not the city, okay. So basically it's no cost to us, we just need to cover CYA for us.
Do, do we have a specific date for end of summer? I mean, would it be Labor Day weekend like the pool or, I mean, what?
I think we ought to run that thing till November, you know?
Yeah, until ice starts.
I think you'd be very attracted with ice.
Why don't you be fascinated with ice?
I mean, you can go through it and make some comments and think maybe you want to change.
I've got a question if I can.
If you want to and let Mr. Gerner know and if you need a specific date, but I would think it'd be a little later than later.
My question is, I'm talking about maintaining insurance on it. So do we technically own each of those pieces or does Kuonis own them?
Kuonis bought it.
They, they paid for it, but did they turn ownership over to us? So every piece on there, do we as a city own those right now?
I turned it into the insurance that way.
That's what I needed to know because I don't want us to pay for insurance if we don't own it, there's no charitable interest.
No, no, we have to take over the ownership.
Okay. I'm completely fine.
Right now, because I said.
All right, I'm fine with this agreement the way it is.
What's up to you guys at this point? Do you want to look at it further or do you want to make a motion to pass it on or?
Well, doesn't, I don't think it needs to pass on to finance because it doesn't spend any money. I think it's, this committee would be the one to.
Don't we have to send it to full council? Or is this just a public lands and buildings thing?
Yeah, I'm thinking we just have to.
Because we're not asking, we're not asking for any legislation for it, so I think, or do, do we need legislation to authorize you to enter into the agreement?
Yeah, I think you do.
Yeah, okay.
Well, I would make a motion for the service director entering to a agreement with Kuonis for the maintenance for this.
I will second that.
Okay, so we have a first from Mr. Wireball and a second from Mr. Myers. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Okay. Any other open projects you'd like to talk about this evening? Any public participation? Okay, seeing that there's none, I will adjourn this committee at 6:25 PM.
Okay, I will call Plating to order at 6:26 PM. On July 6. Members present, Kevin Myers, Dan Wireball, Terry Spiegel and myself, Chair. Any public participation for Plating? None being. Any open projects? Like I mentioned at the council meeting, we have the BZA meeting about 403 West Warren. So if anybody's interested in coming.
That's a week from today?
No.
Tuesday.
It says coming Tuesday at 4 o'clock up here.
Mr. McKeever, also on that agenda is a home occupation.
Ah, yeah, that's true also.
Or, or, oh, I forget the address. One, I believe it's 150 Penn Avenue.
That's right. So, other than that, that's all I have. Anything else?
Well, I, I don't necessarily do and I brought this up in committee before in the meeting. It should be in committee, but I still see a lot, a lot of people living in campers in town. I'm not sure what, what we do about that. So all, one thing that I see where we're, the city's getting ripped off is that they're getting water service from, you know.
Do you have the addresses?
I could get them for you.
I haven't seen them, so.
I've seen two or three of them.
Yeah, you know, it's all right. You know, I don't think it's no big deal if Grandma and Grandpa come. My Grandma and Grandpa used to come up from Florida and stay all summer, you know, but some of these have been there for months and months, you know.
Just if you get us the addresses, we'll probably want them.
All right.
I'll have the solid waste drivers as they do trash, write down the addresses.
And I don't know, I haven't really looked, but the one that stuck out in my mind was over on Woodlawn in, behind that fence. I don't know what's going on behind there.
Well, the last I heard, it was titled over to his aunt and uncle from Ontario and he's in jail right now.
Oh, but somebody was living back there. I mean, they had like a hole.
Yeah. That was back when Rob Ratliff was here.
Yeah, yeah. And I don't know how that, how that, you know, comes out as property taxes and, you know, and, and, you know, services and if they're running their electric off the neighbors off the extension cord or something, you know, it's kind of not safe, so that's my only issue, you know? I'm not trying to make a big bundle off of water service from.
Best to address it.
But once, you know.
Well, they're not connected to sewer, obviously.
Well, yeah. And where is that going? Okay.
Why don't you inspect that hose now?
No. I'll come in right after, I'll come in your office right after I inspect it.
Boots and off.
Boots and off.
Terry, do you have anything?
No.
No, sir.
All right. Any public participation? None being. I'll adjourn at 6:29. Okay, I will call Economic Development to order at 6:30 PM on July 6. Members present, Ciara and Sherick, Steve Young and myself as acting chair. Brenton Potter is absent. Is there any public participation? None being. Any open projects?
Not this evening.
Okay. Any public participation? With that, I will adjourn at 6:31 PM.
Finance Committee, I'll call Finance Committee to order here on July 6 at 8, wait, 6:32 Members present, Mark McKeever, Kevin Myers, Terry Spiegel and myself, Chair. Any public participation for Finance Committee?
I have some public participation, Mr. Chairman. I was informed that a person here is at her last meeting for the City of Bucyrus City Council and Jerry Goble, I'm not trying to embarrass you, but I think you publicly need to be thanked for a breed that's not so much around anymore, a professional journalist. You are a fantastic writer and very fair and I know you're going to another position with Gannett, so you're staying in the same company, but you won't be back here and I hope whoever replaces you will be in the same, same style, same manner, same temperament and ability that you have. So I just want to thank you publicly for what you did.
I think you're allowed to put that as the headline now on this meeting. You want to quote one hell of a journalist?
One of the Quin story.
Yeah. Buried on page seven.
That's proper coming.
So, was that, is that all the public participation anymore on that?
That's all I have.
All right. The 2023 Service Garage Stormwater Project, I guess we heard about that from Jeff. Guess we just need to go ahead and, you want to put it out for bid? Is that what it?
Yes. And a not to exceed $121,500.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'll make that motion to allow the service director to go out to bid on that stormwater project at the service garage with a not to exceed amount of $121,500 and requesting it as an emergency legislation.
I'll say that.
All right. We got Kevin with the first and Terry with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, unanimous and.
Did that include a 10% contingency in there?
Yeah, okay.
I assume so.
So, the 450 Dudley, I guess we kind of put that on the back burner until we get some more information or money, either one, right?
Yeah.
I think we're all in agreement to that. Open projects, any open projects we need to talk about? And I don't know, is, I am assuming that we, I thought, well, I guess I'll bring it up now. I thought Arcadis was coming tonight. Did they?
No, the 20th.
Oh, the 20th.
Yeah.
20th, I got to write this stuff down. I got it. Okay, the 20th. Okay, well, we'll talk about that on the 20th then. All right, any other open projects? Any other pub, public participation? Okay.
What about appropriations we got in front of us?
Oh, we got appropriations. Well, that wasn't on my list. Oh, we got appropriations. Well, that wasn't on my list. Come on, Kevin, you're slipping.
I didn't type the list, sir.
Oh, whoever typed the list, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Callie. Okay, what do we got here, Callie, for appropriations?
For appropriations, we have, we had purchased, and we had in the budget to purchase tablets for.
Oh, that's right.
To garbage trucks. And we didn't have, we didn't include the money to provide service. It's not that much. So, we want to put $275 in sewage disposal, sewers and drains, in the contractual services line, and $825 in solid waste management, solid waste contractual services line.
I'll make a motion to approve this as an emergency.
I'll say it.
First by Mark, second by Terry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, then, moving on to Trinus first, right?
Yep, so, we made that purchase of that house with that FEMA grant at 539 North Lane Street, and we had $5,000 we used from the general fund to make the initial, like, holding purchase, I guess. And we now need to transfer that from the FEMA fund back to, just reimburse the general fund.
Yes, go ahead, Kevin.
I, I will make a motion to transfer $5,000 from Fund 264 back to Fund 101 into Line 24.
I'll second that. Okay, I'll second if we're prepared.
Well, I'm going to give this one to Mark, because Terry's been kind of hogging things up. Kevin made the motion, seconded by Mark. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, anything else?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
When you just passed for the stormwater project, and MS4 as a service grant, did you do that as an emergency?
I believe we did, didn't we? Yes. Anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Okay. Anything else? All good? Okay, any more, any public participation? One more shot. All right, since there is none, I will adjourn at 6:38.